I am currently at school. In my classroom, but I'm on break, so I have no kids in here. But I'm going to right and start the idea process here of the next painting and also do some homework for Bible study. Um, so the, the the, what's the word? I can't, I can't even think. The scripture. The scripture that I'm going to use for the painting is the same scripture that I'm gonna use for my Bible study homework. We don't kill two birds with one thumb. Hello, amen. So Isis sent me another video. And let's see what the scripture is. Okay, Ray, your next verse is coming out of Matthew five, verse six. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they are filled. Nice, okay, so immediately I'm thinking. All of these deal with food, it's so funny. Um, cuz the last one was like food based, I did the fruit and the meat in the back cuz immediately I was like hunger for righteousness, like there's a plate of somebody eating and on the plate it says righteousness. I'm looking over here cuz I have a paper that I'm writing on. Um, hunger and righteousness. I think I will go more on thirst than hunger, even though I wanna include both. So I have a few ideas off rip. One, the one that I was thinking of was like a person with the plate of food, like a close up shot of a person and a plate of food. And eating some pasta that says righteousness, like spelled in the word righteousness. Or even on the plate and it says righteousness. Or even, ooh, I just thought of this right now, like a restaurant named righteousness. And, and on the sign it says something like for those, for those who thirst and hunger. For those who hunger and thirst. And then like somewhere else. Have it say. Come to be filled, I don't know, I don't know if that's. That's another option though. The other one I was thinking of was maybe doing like water. Like a cup of water or a bottle of water. And somebody, oh, it's like coming as I'm speaking, it's like coming into my brain. So somebody with a bottle of water who is, that's empty and they are clearly thirsty, like they've been running. They got sweat all over them, they tired and they at a water fountain that says righteousness. And they filling up the bottle of water at the water fountain that says righteousness, or even like a stand. You know how you go to a race and like on like a five K run or walk or three K run or walk or one K one? Run or walk, there's a, like there's a part of the race where there's people standing with water bottles to give you or like either granola bars or banana or something. Like maybe it could even be a kiosk, not a kiosk, but like a stand, like a, like a lemonade stand, but it says righteousness. And then there's granola bars and water bottles or a place to fill up your water bottle. Because the person is hungry. And thirsty. That's three separate ideas. I like it, I like it. Which one do I like more? We're gonna have to do the process again of sketching. And I don't have my sketchbook with me. Uh, but I do have copy paper, so I might do some copy paper, but first before we even do some sketching. My homework for Bible study is to do the SOAP method. So SOAP stands for scripture, observation, application, and prayer. So you first find a scripture and then what do you observe about scripture, like what does it say in the scripture? Or like what are some words that stand out to you? And then application is how you can apply it to your everyday life or even apply it to your week. And then prayer is asking for it, but like praying about it being applied in your life. Matthew five, verse one, introduction to the Sermon on the Mounts, this is okay. Now when Jesus saw the crowds, he went up on the mountainside and sat down. His disciples came to him and he began to teach them the Beatitudes. He said. Start in verse three. Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are those who mourn and they will be comforted. Blessed are the meek, for they will inherit the earth. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they will be filled, that is verse six, that is my verse. Okay, verse seven, blessed are the merciful, for they will be shown mercy. What, verse eight, blessed are the pure in heart and they will see God. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God. Blessed are those who are persecuted because of righteousness, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are you when people insult you, persecute you, and falsely say all kinds of evil against you because of me. Rejoice and be glad, because great is your reward in heaven, for in the same way they persecuted the prophets who were before you. What a word, what a, what a word, what a word, okay. Salt and light is the next part, verse thirteen. You are the salt of the earth, but if the salt loses its saltiness, how can it ma- be made salty again? It is no longer good for anything except to be thrown out and trampled underfoot. You are the light of the world, a town built on a hill cannot be hidden. Neither, neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl. Instead, they put it on its stand and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others. That they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven. Oh, verse sixteen, that one is actually touching because like my prayer every day, every morning is may I be a light to others. I pray that people see you through me, you as in God. Uh, so like hearing that, like in the same way, let your sh- light shine before others. Let me be a light to others. That they may see your good deeds and glorify your Father in heaven, seeing God through you. And my brother used to say things like that all the time, like last year that God would talk to him through people, like God would speak through people as they're speaking to him and he knew it was God. Um, so that's just a touching little verse, like I'm glad I read that, but we're gonna stop there on Matthew. In my little pouch. In my little pouch, I have a whole bunch of different color markers and highlighters. Because I am a true artist at heart and learner, I like to write in different colors, so. When I go on, when I go to church, I like to write notes and I do every church service in a different color. And this is kinda like my notebook. My notebook, my notes book, I made this book myself, um, in college. And my printmaking and paper arts class, I say all that to say is that I'm using this book to do my Bible study homework. Here we go, SOAP, today is Wednesday. I usually only do notes for like, um, church on Sunday, like during Bible study, I'm just listening and participating. Scriptures, and when I tell you Matthew was really writing for real. Matthew said, I'm writing everything. Alright, so we got our scripture down. O is for observation, um, so key words, I would definitely say righteousness. I would definitely say this phrase, they will be filled. And then I would also say those who hunger and thirst. That's basically the whole scripture. Um, and this part might be a little lengthy, so I might even have to go over here and do it. When I think hunger and thirst, I think, a part of me thinks like you're starving. And dehydrated. I spelled it right? But when you're hungry and thirsty, you will go looking for it, like you will go looking for food. I say looking, but I would say seeking, I think that's a better word, seeking, I'm gonna highlight seeking. Seeking, so when you're hungry and thirsty for righteousness, like it's your mission. When you're hungry and thirsty, it is your mission to be, for your hunger and thirst to be fulfilled. To be filled, it's your mission, it is your mission, that's all you can think about. Cuz when you're starving and dehydrated, that's all you can think about is how much you're hungry and thirsty. Cuz trust, baby, when I was in college, there were days I didn't go eating, there were times where I when you in class, you just so thirsty, but you don't wanna miss the coreio. But that's all you can think about, you can't even get to grasp the coreio anymore, because that's all you can think about is how thirsty you are. It's your mission slash. Let's go ahead and move on to righteousness. Did I spell that correctly? Being saved. I think of righteousness like being saved by, by God. Being saved, following the word. Let me look up what the definition, what Merriam Webster says righteousness is. Its deeper spiritual meaning righteousness is the quality of being right in the eyes of God. Including character, nature, conscious attitude, conduct, action, and command, word. Righteousness is therefore based upon God's standard because he's the ultimate lawgiver. Isaiah thirty-three, twenty-two, is that what Isaiah thirty-three, twenty-two says? Let's go to Isaiah thirty-three, twenty-two. For the Lord is our judge, the Lord is our lawgiver, the Lord is our king. It is he who will save us, how did they put, that's not what, I mean. What version of the Bible is this? I do like this little thing, it's from Christianity dot com. I do like that, so I'm gonna put that here, I'm gonna make sure I know it's from Christianity dot com. And then I'm gonna write the rest of it up here. In quotation. I'm gonna put a little thingy over here. So we know that it's included into that. Another one says from Bible Study Tools dot com, it says righteousness is God's faithfulness as the Lord of the covenant. God acts righteously when he performs saving deeds for his people and thereby in delivering them places, them in a right relation to himself, Bible Study Tools dot com. And the passage in second Corinthians five, twenty-one. The word righteousness means God's approval or being considered right in God's eyes. And that's what this one said, the quality of being right in the eyes of God, so I'm going to, I've seen that before. I'm going to take my highlighter, I made this green. Being right in the eyes of God. Think of it, and then it continues to say, think of it in this fashion, when God sees you, he approves of you because you are a bearer of his righteousness, you are justified in his sight. What does Jesus say about righteousness? ESV version, English Standard Version. I tell you, for I tell you, unless your righteousness exceeds that of the scribes and Pharisees, you will never enter the kingdom of heaven. The New International Version, for I tell you that unless your righteousness surpasses that of the Pharisees and the teachers of the law, you will certainly not enter the kingdom of heaven. That one's from BibleRef dot com, I don't, oh, that's Matthew five, twenty, but that's the same. Actually, that's the same chapter. And the N I T, N I V version says, look on Zion, the city of our festivals, oh wait, no, we're still in Isaiah, let's go back. To, I mean, we, yeah, we were still in Isaiah, so let's go back to Matthew, says. For I tell you that unless your righteousness surpasses that of the Pharisees and the teachers of the law, you will certainly not enter the kingdom of heaven. Okay, so I think we got a good idea of righteousness. So basically those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, those who seek out being right in the eyes of God. Those who hunger and thirst for being right in the eyes of God. Then it says they will be filled, so we'll put it over here cuz we ran out of room. Cuz I did highlight they will be filled, which is kind of why I wanna use the, the, um, idea of water. Because when I hear filled, I think of like water being poured or like, like you know how they say half cup, half empty, half full type of thing, I immediately think of a cup of water or like a bottle of water. But to be filled also like when you eat food and you've over eaten, you're like, I'm full. Or like, I can't eat anymore. Time, the, the, the time sensors in this classroom. Y'all, now I'm going back to the, the painting, even though I'm supposed to be studying right now. They will be filled, so, ooh, a different version of it says blessed are those who seek after righteousness, for they shall be filled. This was Jesus's own words during his teaching from up in the mountain. This verse means that those who seek after righteousness shall receive the gift of righteousness in full. Will come to them, like I don't know what other way to say they will be filled, I know that stood out to me, but I didn't really know how else to say it besides they will receive it. It will be theirs, like if you seek and it is your mission, haha, if you seek it and it is your mission, then it will happen. Like if you make it your mission, like you don't just have a plan and not seek it out, like and not see it through. Like you can, when you look for something, you will find it, you know what I'm saying? When you, and that's what I feel like it's saying, it's saying when you look for righteousness, you will find it. I don't know, I don't know how else to put it. When you look for it, if you look for righteousness, you will find it. For they will find it. For it is theirs. I don't know how else to put it. Am I doing the most right now? And like part of me says they shall find it and claim it. But you don't just claim righteousness, but I guess like in this sense, like you could say that. Like I've wrote so much for all the other ones, like this one is so simple, I'm like, that's, that's what it is, like there's no other way to put it. Core dot com is the one that I see, it says they shall receive the gift in full. Now it is time for A, which is application. How can I apply this to my life? I would say continuing to seek righteousness, continuing to, let me write this as I'm talking, I don't know if I'm spelling this right. And being right in God's eyes. Which is righteousness, and the only way to do that though, being right in God's eyes is to read the word, honestly. Because you don't know what's right in God's eyes if you're not reading the Bible. Like you don't know that, you may not know that something is a sin really, truthfully. If you're not really in your Bible for real, like, and I'm gonna give you an example. Like I grew up hearing that sex before marriage was a sin and sex outside of marriage was a sin, things like that. Like if you have sex outside of marriage, you're going to hell and all that other stuff, which is a little much. Telling somebody that they're going to hell, growing up, I just thought that it was the toxic church people doing the most, uh, which it kinda was in a way, they weren't completely wrong, like sex outside of marriage is a sin. And I didn't fully realize that until this year when I was reading the Bible. I got deep into the Bible and really started reading it and I was like, you know what, like that's why nothing, that's why things aren't really going the way it's supposed to be going. And all the things, and you can't be mad that things aren't given what it's supposed to give when there's sin attached to it. You know what I'm saying? But it wasn't until I was really reading my Bible and I was like, oh, them church people wasn't all the way wrong. Like, I'm saying church people as if I wasn't in the church also, but like, you know what I'm talking about, there's them the gossipy folks in church and the people who love to judge others, even though you ain't supposed to be doing that. But, and that's why a lot of people have negative experiences, but I'm not gonna go all deep into that. But you don't really know for real what God is saying until you read his word. And it's a whole different thing when you hear from God, like hearing it from another human being, it's like, ah, you a hater, ah, you just don't wanna be happy, ah, 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 like just be negative, you be one of those type of church people, you be those, you be in that type of Christian, like. That's what you think and feel when you hear it from humans, but when you hear it from God, y'all. It's like, oh, okay, word, I got you, I got you, like, okay, word, that's what you really said for real? Okay, let me, let me get it together, it just, it just hit different when it come from God, it just hit different when God himself said it. When other people say it, like I, I saw something, I think it was on with the Perry's podcast. He said, you can't give people a gospel or the word in a trash bag because they're gonna assume it's trash. He said something like that, and I'm going off on a tangent, but like, it's a good, it's a good point. You can't give people something in a trash bag and expect them to just take it, like would you take something out of a trash bag? Would you eat something out of a trash bag? No, so why would you expect somebody to eat from the word that you're giving them and you gave it to them in a trash bag? They're gonna assume it's trash, however, you put it on a plate, nice and lovely, and you say it to them in a loving way. Because you love them and you're not trying to rebuke them, they will, it will come to them better. Like they will receive it better, and people at church would say stuff like that, like, like they never said it to me, I would just hear them gossiping about it. Like, oh, sex outside of marriage is a sin and you're going to hell and your marriage isn't ordained by God and all these other things, it's like you're saying, and the way that they would say it, and they're gossiping, they're being messy, it's like the way you're saying all of these things is in a trash bag, gossiping is also a sin, lady, ma'am, but regardless, you want me to just accept that for what it is, in a trash bag? I'm, I'm not, however, God said it the way it was supposed to be said, cuz it's his word, amen. And when I actually read it, but you don't know that for sure until you read the Bible for real. Like getting your Bible, getting your Bible bag for real, but you don't know exactly how he said it or how it was meant to be said and in what context, unless you read your Bible. So I say all that to say, turning it back in to boom, the only way to do that is to read the word. I'm gonna put Bible in all caps, bold. Oops, I don't even like a B no more, because going to church is great, going to church is lovely, you get a word, you might get some prophecy. And you have a community, however, you gotta go back and read the Bible for yourself and really study the word and study the context for real. Because you hearing it out of the human being's mouth, and sometimes God speaks through humans, which is lovely, we love that. However, it is also really lovely to hear it straight from God himself, which is the big B I B elite, moving on. Bing, 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 talk to God, continuing to talk to God regularly, cuz I talk to him every day, multiple times a day, with God. Oops, I didn't realize that wasn't the same page. I'm going in more detail because when I go back and read this, like I'm more in depth and I can really recall like what it is I'm talking about, cuz right now it's like, oh yeah, I remember and it's like, hmm, well, I, and then maybe like if I, if someone needs to borrow this, like my friends or in the future, if God blesses me with kids, you know, they wanna go and read through the notes that I've made. They'll be able to really grasp it and what I really meant to say. It's like I have what I want, but I don't know how to put it into words for real, like I know what I'm trying to say. I should know how to say it, like in my brain, it makes sense, but like, how do I write that down? God, give me the words, Holy Spirit, it's like I wanna say something like acting out his word or like following through, because you can read the word, you can seek the righteousness and read the word and talk with God, but if you're not really following through on what he wants you to do or acting out his word, like I feel like it's not gonna happen. Like you have to actually do it, which like it says over here, conduct, actions, the quality of being right in the eyes of God. Including character, your nature, conscious, your attitude, conduct, your actions, so you have to actually act them out. And command, word, which is the Bible, I would definitely say, I didn't even, I forgot I was even over here, but I would definitely say keeping a good attitude and acting out his word. And I'm gonna highlight those because there's, it's over here and it's being repeated. Attitude. Acting, word, boom, I feel like those are all good ways of applying this to my life. So let's go ahead and go into prayer, some things that I want to say in prayer, so I'm gonna put these in bullet points. And then as I pray, I'm gonna refer to the bullet points and then kind of elaborate on them. For me personally, I just feel more genuine when I pray, like and it just comes to me. Even if I stutter or even if I like pause or have to find the right word that I'm trying to use or whatever. But pray how, pray how you wanna pray, that's just me personally, and I always, I usually, um, almost always thank God for the gift of sight and being able to really read his word for myself. And then understanding of his word, comprehending his word. I, I think I'm gonna put a thanks side and then a ask side, because I almost, I think I always start out my prayers in thanks of all the things I'm thinking in for. And then I ended with ask, and you can do it however you want, that's just how I organize my prayer. Cuz my brain, like I just need, I need order in my brain, cuz if not, I will get stuck, so this is how I order my prayers. Important to thank God for the thing, I can't spell, thack, really? It's important to thank God instead of ask, 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 like this is what I want. It's important to also thank him for the things that he's already given him. Ah, I can't write, and then I would even do understanding for both, thank him for understanding and ask him for understanding. Because personally, I know I understand a lot of his word, but then I would also ask for better understanding and like understanding of different verses or chapters, cuz some chapters are a little like, huh? Like let me read that again, let me read that again, let me find some reference somewhere else, what is, and then typing it on Google, like what is that, you know what I'm saying? And allowing me to walk with him, cuz you don't really have to do that. He don't have to let me do nothing, but he did humility, because to be hungry and thirsty for his righteousness, you have to, you have to feel like you don't have it yet, or you have to feel like he could take it away at any time. Because if you get too big in your head, if you get too cocky, or if you get too, touch with an A, what's the word? You're not hungry or righteous, you're like, you're not seeking out righteousness anymore cuz you think it's yours. And he, and it, and he said it is, it will, you will receive it, but you have to continue to do that. Not just do it for a little bit and then that's it. It says blessed are those who hunger and thirst, not those who have hungered and thirst in the past. Those who currently hunger and thirst, so you still have to continue to seek out righteousness. And really to do that, you have to stay humble, you have to show humility. Trying to think, trying to think, I really need to hurry up because my class might be coming soon. I'm trying to think, 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 think. I would also say thank him for his word, cuz he didn't have to give it to us, he didn't really have to place the gift of prophecy over people, but he did, so boom, thank you for your word, Lord God. And I would just also ask for righteousness, ask for righteousness. And I would just also ask for righteousness, ask for righteousness. And I also al- almost always pray for his will, his way, on his time, at his speed. Do your will in your way, at your time, whenever you want it to happen, at your speed. How fast or how slow you want it to happen, because sometimes I feel like I stay in things too long. Or I rush through things, so I always pray for like, God's timing, God's speed. I don't know if that has anything to do with righteousness, but I think it does, because to be right in his eyes is to fulfill his will and his way, on his time, at his speed. I hope I wrote this like legibly enough. And when I think of any more, then I'll just write it on the back here. Because I genuinely can't think of anything else to ask for. I always have a lot of things, but it's hard for me to ask for things, like I don't really know what to ask for. Cause I just feel like everything that he's given me, like he didn't have to give me any of this stuff, so all of this stuff is like, how could I even ask for more? But we do. It's like, how can, sometimes I'm like, how can I even ask for more, like, what, like you really didn't have to do anything. So what you've given me, I'm like very grateful for. Am I asking for too much? Because other people got things that they need, that's more important than than mine, and we talked about this at the last Bible study. Like will you ask God, will you ask him for the things that you want? Like, will you trust him to fulfill the things that you want and need? And I was saying like, sometime, it's like I trust him to do that, but I just feel like other people's needs are more important, like I'm being a bother, I'm being a nuisance, like girl, you asking for this, but you got a roof over your head and AC. And you got food in your belly every day, but like, you, you really don't need that. But then, like my brother was saying, he was like, um, and and I know this. But I think sometimes you have to really like sit in it for real, like you know things, but you have to sit in it and be comfortable with knowing those things and like acting out those things. Because he was like, God is omnipotent, he's omnipresent. He can do everything at once, if he wanted to. So you asking for this does not take away from somebody else asking for something else. Like, he can do both, so you feeling like that you're, you feeling like you're a nuisance, or you feeling like you're asking for too much, I don't wanna say like it would be offensive, but it like he would be offensive. What do you mean you're asking for too much, nothing is too much for me, you know what I'm saying, like, that's what God is saying. What do you mean you're asking for too much, do you not realize who I am, like nothing is too much for me? Ask what you want, ask what you need, as long as it fits into my will and my way, I will give it to you. As long as you are obedient and and hunger for thirst and righteousness, I will fill you. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's my little rant on what I like what we talked about on last Bible study, and like what I had been personally dealing with. And I'm getting out of it, cause I'm gonna ask for any and everything, and then say be at your will. If it is in your will, let it happen, if not, then hey, it wasn't meant to be, I didn't need it anyway, you know what I'm saying? So yeah, that is my Bible study prep, this is my homework, so scripture is scripture, literally, that one's, that one's done for you. He already wrote scripture, all you gotta do is find the scripture, observation, what do you notice about the scripture? What are the main things that stick out to you, what do you observe about it, and what do you like break it down for real? Which is my favorite part, is breaking down scripture, cause like you find all these little things, and there's even more, like more and more things come, like every time you find a new scripture, or every time you go over a scripture. It's like I find more things, there's so much more to be said about it, and there's so many other links back to other scriptures, and it becomes like a game of like finding all the links and and finding more about it. But whatever. So yeah, it it be, it gets fun, it gets so fun. Be a nerd for God, be a nerd of the Bible, because when I tell you, it gets so fun, it gets fun. Okay, moving on, really observing what it says and why specific words were used, which we also talked about. You know, certain words are used for a reason, like God didn't, like words mean things for a reason. God didn't just put words out there and use words, like he used righteousness for a reason. Like he used field to, for a reason. He used hunger and thirst for a reason, you know what I'm saying? So really breaking those down, A, application, how can it be applied to your life? We'll say application and action, what are you going to do, what are you gonna act out? So that you're applying this to your life, and then prayer, what are you gonna say to God, what are you gonna thank him for, what are you gonna ask him for? And I think this, doing this also helped with what I'm gonna do for the painting, which I will do when I get home. Might just do like, a short version for the painting video. And do the long extended version as a separate video, everybody need to use soap every day. Uh, I am hilarious, okay, anyways, I'll see y'all back at the crib when I get to painting.